Okay, if everybody's here, should we take roll and rock and roll?
All right. Calling me to order Joe Becker. Andy Bertram here. Dan Kader here. Scott Gergen here. Lisa Dean here. Russ Roloff here. Vince O'Brien.
Here.
Superintendent Collins.
Here.
You guys not going to close that here?
No, we're good. They'll be in here shortly.
A motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Motion second.
Okay, and can we have a motion to approve the minutes of the January 20th meeting? Oh, wait. Any discussion on agenda? Sorry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Agenda approved. Now for the minutes from January.
Make motion to approve minutes?
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And the bill's payable.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, and now we can get to the good news.
Really good news, and I don't know if you want to invite in Laura Zabel?
Come on up front. Come on up front, please.
I have a little surprise you didn't work time ago.
Come on up front. Please, come on.
Please, come on, don't be shy.
I know, we'll hide behind.
Yes, that's okay.
Well, you're part of great news.
Yay.
And you know that. National Society Star of the North Award. Just share a little bit about it, Laura Zabel, want to lead or send it?
Well-
Or do you have your own group that's going to lead?
We were going to have Graham talk to you about it.
Absolutely.
Hey, Graham. So we got this award for the Halloween food drive that we always do, and each of us individually have a project that we run, and that was actually my project, and so I coordinated getting groups together for students and the routes they would take and all the stuff that we needed for it. And we ended up getting 1,200 pounds of food?
6,000.
Yeah, yeah.
Pretty close. If you round, it's, yeah.
Yeah. So, yeah, it was very successful. We actually, it was the most people we've gotten.
You know, and we were talking to Hastings Family Service, and they're just so grateful when we come in with these projects, especially a big project like that, because they really rely on some of those, and they told us we were the second largest group that in, over the course of the year that they have. The mail carriers are the one that bring in a little bit more food.
Bags that you get, yeah.
But, yeah, so it's a really fun project to do and really neat to see how many people it benefits, so.
They've been great, too, to partner with us, that they open up early and they get extra staff in, so we can, the first time we brought our 17 vehicles of food down, there was tears for lots of different reasons, joy and where are we going to put all this food? It was, yeah, it was a lot of fun, but our organization has done a lot, all these kids are involved with different projects that they coordinate, so these are four of our five officers, and can you guys just tell what else we do throughout the year besides the food drive?
And tell us who you are.
Yes.
And you two teachers tell us who you are, because you're on TV.
Okay, hey, we're on TV.
Well, I'm Lucas Kleagle, and with Logan Welshons over here, we run the bake sale, which is, I kind of think of it as our selfless project. We sell baked goods at all the conferences for the high school, and that money we then use to do things for, for example, we bring the seniors to the Gillette Hospital where we do a fundraiser for as well, but we have to bus the kids there, so we need money to do that and other kind of expenditures that kind of accumulate from that sort of thing.
Bank with-
Bank with for inauguration of the NHS members. So we're totally self-funded, and so these two guys, they put on an awesome bake sale. That's coming up again in a week, so-
Next week, treats, you guys, come up to the high school, you can get yourself some treats. Pete?
I'm Erin Hendricks, and I did the Red Cross blood drive this year, so we raised, or we collected 100 pounds of blood.
What's the appropriate verb on that, right? We took, yes. Which was great, and the Red Cross were one of their biggest blood drives in the city as well, so they really appreciate it, and actually, our coordinator, Lindsay, is going to, from the Red Cross, is going to be our speaker at induction this year, so each year we have a different person that's part of the groups that we work with come. And our last project that we're going to do is-
It's a big one.
Yeah, the Gillette Children's Hospital Walkathon, which is in early May, so if anybody comes to your door knocking for donations, please consider donating for that, but last year we raised just over $20,000 for Gillette, which was phenomenal. We bring the check up to Gillette, we collect toys for their ward there that they can give out to kids, and we always have a great speaker, a student there who will talk to us about, he was amazing, the one that we've had the last couple of years, about how Gillette has impacted him. Lots of kids who decide on careers after they tour the facilities, it's amazing, so.
They take us into the department where they make prosthetics, and we go into Gate Lab where we see all their computer technologies, so they're tracking how people walk and what surgeries might be required to counteract, you know, a disability that they have, so.
It's kind of cool to see what the money we raise actually does, instead of just handing them the check and watching it disappear kind of.
And Graham, what's your last?
My name is Graham Johnson, and like I said, I run the Halloween Food Drive.
So all seniors that'll be graduating this year.
Yep, we have 90 members this year in our group, and we just had, our application process is starting, we have 92 applicants for next year, so it's alive and well.
Well, thank you so much, and we appreciate your leadership, because we know that we can't do without you, but also, we're about academics, but we're also about giving back to others, and you're definitely great examples for that for Hastings, so thank you very much.
Excellent, thanks for having me.
Yes, thank you, thank you very much.
You know, we should compile some kind of list, because there's so many groups in the district that do give back to the community, all the way from K through 4 and pre-K maybe, all the way through high school, there's, it would be good sometime to recognize all of them on some kind of a-
Not just organizations, just little, you know, one-off-
Yeah.
-penny drives and things that they do, you know, that individual teachers are doing with their classrooms. It's, it would be quite a list.
Yeah, yeah.
Come on in, Suzanne.
Hi, how are you?
Good to see you.
Congratulations.
Thank you, thanks for asking.
All right, we had some snow this year.
We did have some snow.
Eventually.
All at the right time, we had some snow. I'm Suzanne Lee Beck, I coach with Jim Piney at the Alpine Ski Team, we also brought some of our parents, which make all of this possible, so thanks for inviting us, and this is Coach Jim Piney.
Appreciate you guys letting us come to this. We're missing one racer. I don't know what he had going on, we're missing Jake Gartski, who actually qualified as individual, as well as the team. Stephen O'Connor, senior, Jake Gartski's also a senior, both qualified as individual. Jacob Piney, 10th grade, who also qualifies as individual. And then the team, we got Sam McKinney, also a senior we're going to lose. Next is Hayden Dever, 10th grader. We have Ellie Piney, who made it as an individual for our girls, her own lone individual, she ended up 23rd, honorable mention at state. We have 10th grader Jack Ceteria, who's on the team, and we have our unofficial official JV captain, Logan Welshons.
Hmm, looks familiar.
He does exercise the operation. He's our main cheerleader. He gets the teams going. We've, we won quite, actually, the boys won all of their- races, their conference meets. They won-
Sections.
Sections. They won the Kelly Hines Memorial and the Jack Zar Memorial Race. Actually, the only second place you got was up at Giants Ridge at the MLK Invitational, which was about 16 below zero, was awful cold, but they ended up second to the state winner, Enoch, so they did really well at that race. Girls ended up second by 16 points in the conference, so they did well. As well, and we're losing three girls this year, three seniors, Ellie's a senior, Hannah Ceteria, and Sarah Jelfs. So we're going to be in a little bit of rebuilding next year, but-
And how do you, how do you recruit for this quarter? I mean, because it's a very different, number one, the elements.
Yeah, it's a little different, however, we're very lucky in the aspect that with the two ski areas on each end of town, they have what they call a D-team or development team, and kids can start in that at like six years old. So everyone on the team, with the exception of our foreign exchange student, was either involved with USSA or one of the D-teams, so we're really lucky in that.
Okay.
Most of our kids have race wins, I guess the only one that didn't this year, besides our foreign exchange student, is Abigail, who was a junior, who never skied race, came out for the team and raced with us. So, yeah, we'll take anybody who wants to come out and put up with the elements. It was, it was kind of cold this year, it was definitely kind of cold, and a little late start, but we did, we came over all that, so.
And your parents have to be great fans as well.
We have probably the best, well, we have the best parents, because to run a race, we don't have officials. It's not like basketball, you get a couple of officials there, we have to do the officiating ourselves, plus set the course, you know, we don't get to go walk on a court, we have to set it, so we have a lot of parents that help do that, help officially gate judge, write the times down, so, yeah, without the parents, this would be all tough, very tough. And for the parents to pay for all the expensive equipment that these guys are on would be pretty tough as well.
That was going to be my two elements of difficulty for recruiting. Cost, the weather.
Yeah.
So, and I'm sure they help recruit other kids into it as well.
Absolutely, we've been, we had 35 kids this year.
Oh.
Which has been really good. And I, we're losing eight, but I know there's at least four new girls coming on that showed interest, and hopefully we can find a few more to replace the eight we lose.
But we'll come back next year and tell you about it.
Absolutely, all right. Absolutely.
And for the seniors, do you know what you're doing next year, your thoughts, or maybe you don't know, and that's fine, I didn't know where I was going until, or what I was doing until about May 30th, so. No idea yet?
Nope.
Okay, that's fine.
I think I'm going to be going to UMD.
Okay.
And then I'll be able to ski there more, Ice Spirit Mountain.
Okay.
Not sure.
Okay, that's fine.
And I am either the U of M or Madison for chemical engineering.
Okay, cool.
And I think Jake Gartski is-
Going to St. Cloud.
St. Cloud.
Mechanical engineering, I think is what he is planning.
Well, thank you so much for representing, I mean, what a year, very-
Yeah, it was a great year.
Replicate that outstanding year, and again, thanks to the parents who are there with you every step of the way, and to continue to have two coaches who are willing to do it for not only the love of the sport, but the love of some young student athletes, too, we really appreciate that.
Thank you.
So thank you very much.
Thank you guys.
Andy, Andy.
Yeah, I'm going to skip superintendent's report, or underneath the superintendent's report, more good news. I think most people know Andy, but some of our new board members might know, not know, Andy's our tech integration, and as part of Vision 2025, we said we need to communicate more, and this is part of it, presenting, hey, what's going on?
Well, if I, if I walk out of here and you don't have questions for me to follow up with later, I haven't done my job, I've got a sheet with my latest blog post on the back and a QR code that'll take you to a whole load of links that I call our digital footprint, something that we're building every single day in the elementary schools, so that when you Google Hastings Elementary, or you Google one of our schools, or one of our teachers, we are crafting what shows up, rather than letting someone else do that. So, I'm going to kick things off, first of all, by saying we don't have a project this year, sadly. I enjoyed that last year, that was really fun, but, but, but just to recap last year, this is what I felt were our accomplishments last year. LearnPads out now, I think that's a very, very good thing. LearnPads are better than ever, our, our teacher websites are more attractive, more modern, more user-friendly than ever before. Our teachers have a much greater presence on social media with Twitter and Instagram, all with the appropriate privacy controls for our families to stay in touch. There's even more professional development being broadcast by myself and some of my kind of tech-leading teachers, and, well, Vocabulary just expired, we're working on re-establishing that, that was a huge, huge hit, and, and our distance learning, I'll talk about in just a little bit, we've got a really cool event coming up on March 2nd. Last year, some of my challenges, same challenges this year, except our devices aren't so much a challenge, our connectivity is getting better, and at least when it comes to professional development time, we're establishing a culture where folks have an expectation on who they can go see, and what questions to ask, and what they can get from me. We're not where I want to be, but we're getting closer, and in a much more comfortable way, I think part of that, too, is I'm not that new guy anymore. Well, not quite as new. The only thing I want to mention on here is, this was my goal for last year, and then I'm just going to talk about Hastings as a tech leader here in just a little bit, but this is what I want to leave with, just an observation I had made over the last little bit, you know, when we talk about literacy, we talk about reading and writing, right? We can't have one without the other, so you absolutely have to have reading, which is the consuming of information, right? We have writing, which is the creating of information, and you can't be literate without both, you have to have both, and the same thing goes with tech, so, oh, this sharing business, we'll get into authentic audiences here in a minute, but if it's just the teacher, you're bringing the best, it's just good enough. So here's the deal with tech, you still have to consume, you still have to create, and you need to share, but our consuming looks like watching videos, listening to audio, iXL and MobiMax, those are our digital consumables now, you know, those consumable books of worksheets that we've done for years, they kind of still exist, but that kind of is taking the place. We still are consuming, but my focus this year has been on, on getting our students and our teachers, because I want our teachers to lead the way, in creating digital learning artifacts that demonstrate content mastery or understanding, because when you become the teacher, when you are showcasing what you know, you now have a much deeper understanding of what you are supposed to be learning, and it's shareable. And what I love about the whole shareable bit is that when you share to an authentic audience, it doesn't just have to be the teacher, because I said just a minute ago, you know, if it's just the teacher, it's going to be good enough, but if it's for mom and dad, grandma, grandpa, peers, the world, they want it to be awesome. So sharing beyond just the classroom immediately takes it up a level, because you know you want ownership over this, this is me, it's got my name on it, and our students are getting there. So reflections so far on this year, iPad came to the elementarys, I'm really proud of it, teachers had one last year, we continue this year, it's an instructional tool, using a lot, a lot for email, but we're mirroring with Doccams, which is freeing up our teachers from the tethers of the board, they're able to move around the classroom, interact, put an iPad on the student desk, put the student drive and lead instruction for a little while. We're documenting with photo and video almost every day in almost every classroom, which is brilliant, because then you can easily share that with families and keep them in the loop, what's going on today? I don't know, let's check the email, see what's going on. We're creating really powerful, almost professional-looking video with the Replay App, and Seesaw here, again, I'll talk about here in a minute, is a really promising communications tool that is student-driven, instead of teacher-driven, and I love that. Classrooms now have iPads, and again, I am really focusing on the creation of digital learning artifacts, so if you look up here, we had a lot to do with coding in December, and it continues to live on our iPads, and students are using it every day, they are coding lines after lines of text and code in block format, they're building with Pic collage documenting, they're creating, on here, when you take a look, this Chatter Kids app, we've had third graders who have given presidential research projects as the president, making that president speak and narrate their life, it's amazing, and they love it, it's fun for them, so it takes it to the next level. We have Creative Cards, which offer that one-to-one opportunity, they are very popular, it's tough to lock one of those down unless you're planning weeks, weeks in advance, they're built for creation, but the blog post that I had shared with you on the back of that paper actually is geared, because a lot of times our Creative Cards aren't being used for creation as much as they're being used for consumption, and I don't mind that so long as we have a nice balance, because you have to have both. We have, we have ironed out quite a few kinks managing the mass numbers of iPads that we have now, Larry and I have, have, have learned a lot, we're in a better place now, I'm really, really excited about this update that's coming in March, because an update from Apple that transforms how students use an iPad, from a device that just anybody can share, to a device that becomes theirs when they log in, it's their information, it's their progress, and then when they log out and another child logs in, it is now theirs with their information and their progress. So what we're going to do is we're going to try it out with a few beta classes, so that come fall, we know what to expect, and we can set that out for the rest of the year. So for me, relationships have always been what's most important, and the connections that we have made, not just with, within Hastings and within our schools, but with the world, have been phenomenal. We have teachers using Twitter a lot more than they have been, to connect here, there, around the world, and I'm going to talk about beholding the power of this, because right now, the best Twitter test we have ever had at the elementary level is underway, and is blowing my mind, and I can't wait to share it with you here in just a second. When it comes to, by the way, I get really excited, and I go on tangents, and I guess-
I'll reel you back in, don't worry about it.
Yeah, reel me in, and like I said, if I don't leave you with questions to get ahold of me with, then I have, I have failed, so my, my, my goal this year, my, my theme for the year was share your story for the teachers, because I wanted us to celebrate all the great that happens every single day, and so our teachers are doing that, and they're acknowledging the great work of students, we're acknowledging the great work of one another, and we're doing it in a very public way, which helps build our digital footprint, so that when you do Google Hastings Public Schools, or you do Google the name of a school, we control what comes up, not whomever, which is a very, very important thing. When it comes to, when it comes to apps, I always think of, you know, is this transformative? Are we able to do something with this technology that was never, ever before possible until this device? And that's something that I always kind of try to filter things through, and so that falls into our creating and those digital learning artifacts, can we do something that was never before possible? Can we make a president speak? Can we turn ourselves into an avatar and place ourselves on the surface of the moon to talk about the lunar landings? Yeah, we can now, we never could do that before, how awesome is that? How engaging and empowering is that? And all of these digital learning artifacts are so easy to share for free immediately with family, anywhere on planet, and that's just, I get so excited about that. So we're spreading the word, and we're sharing as much as we can with everyone that we can, because that's the way we can connect and create a web of support, not only within our own district, within our own schools, but around the world, and those authentic audiences, moving beyond just this paper's going to the teacher, and then it's coming back to me, it's going into a recycle bin. We're creating digital learning artifacts that can live on, that can be referred back to year in, year out, this is that legacy of learning that our students are creating, and like I said before, it also increases their effort, because they know, hey, this is, this is big time, I'm excited about this, I'm going to take it to the next level. So Seesaw is probably our biggest success this year, and it started last May, and I sat down with Amanda Mall, kindergarten teacher at Kennedy, and Andy Larson, third grade teacher from Pinecrest, and we sat down, we began thinking about our reboot camp, which is at the end of August every year, just kind of way to kick off the year and brush up on tech stuff, and I said, guys, check out Seesaw app, brand spanking new, really cool, student-driven sharing with families, check it out. And that's where I left it, and those two, over the course of the summer, played with it with their own kids, discovered, wow, this is really powerful. They shared it with a couple colleagues, who were like, wow, this is incredibly, it's free, and it's a communication tool within our classroom, with our families, with the teacher, it has taken off to the point where easily a third of each school is using this free resource to communicate, and all completely with very little help from me, just kind of like, here you go, and I love that, but one of my favorite, favorite stories about Seesaw comes from third grade at Pinecrest, Tracy Runzway's class, they made Egyptian toothpaste, which is a disgusting combination of salt and baking soda and, ugh, they made it before winter break, and Tracy said, hey, when you go home, record a reaction video of yourself and put it on Seesaw, so I can see it. So over, over winter break, she's getting these, these reaction videos, which are hilarious, these kids brushing their teeth with this homemade concoction of blah, and so they got back, and they would play, and they would talk about, and they would describe, what was that like? Can you believe that that's what it was? It was such an authentic learning experience, and they got to have fun and laugh with one another, because they shared this experience from their homes with each other at school, super authentic and awesome, absolutely loved it. So anyway, this is, this is getting bigger and bigger, it's going to be brought up this, not this Friday, the week, the Friday after, as an option for teachers to come learn more, and, and I'm getting, I'm getting asked every week about Seesaw and helping new teachers get on board, free, free, there is a paid element to it, I'm ignoring that for now, because it's free. So, so this is what I was talking about earlier, behold the power of something, Dan, do you have the mouse to, would you mind? I suppose I can come back over here and try to- So this is a 10, I'll hit this one right here, this is a 10-second time lapse of Mrs. Davidson's second graders. And they are scanning through our screens, and they are asking or answering questions that the rest of the class set up, and then here at the end, we came up with this brilliant idea, 10 seconds, that's all it was, but they were scanning and answering each other's questions, and we all did that, like, put on your, ask a survey question of your class, get out your, you know, your spiral notebook, what's your favorite color, you know, walk around, ask everybody. We took that to the next level by using Google Forms, and then turning in the QR code that the kids scanned, answer the question, and then, if you can, tap this, tap this replay button, and I want to, I want you to watch the form change live on the screen, it's updating live, I don't know if you can see it, ah, you probably can't. The data was moving as kids chimed in with their answers, so we had 20, no, 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 we had 17 authentic experiences simultaneously that that class can now use to discuss and dissect that data from themselves, but at the end, when we gathered there at the front, I said, you know what we can do that we've never been able to do before? We can survey the world. You game? So they came up with, what's your favorite sport? Pretty globally accepted, right? So they came up with a list of like 12 different sports that they wanted to ask the world, what's your favorite sport? I said, all right, here's the deal, you come up with the questions, I'll get your answers, put it out on Twitter, tag a couple, a few people who I knew could spread the word, and, let's see if I can show you this.
Is that classroom right there, Karen Davidson's classroom?
It is.
All right.
It is, so-
I'll let her know that I saw her picking her nose at rapid speed.
So check this out, this is, this is, this isn't even current, this is earlier, this is the live feed data of responses, but here's where we're getting responses from, I know you can't see that, which is why I made a fun infographic with a map, check this out. We can add South Dakota to this list, we can add Kansas to this list, and there's something else up in the East Coast, we have responses from all of the blue states, we have responses from the green provinces, and we have responses from four countries, Canada, the United States, the UK, and Australia. In fact, most of our, our responses came from Australia, because a class discovered it in Australia, and then their class contributed their favorite, so cricket and rugby went through the roof. But anyway, we just took this little class project, and in two minutes to put the thing together and just put it out there and just let it go, this happened, and now they have this authentic, real-world audience. I just, I don't know about you, I can see this, there's some happy eyes I see out there, but we're revisiting this on Friday, we're giving it Monday to Friday, I'm going back in on Friday with this class to talk about it.
What time will you-
If they don't know.
What time will you be there?
Uh, haven't decided, I have to reach out, last time I was there was at 9:40 or 9:00, somewhere around there.
All right.
Mid-morning. All right, I don't know if my, there we go, so moving forward, here's, here's what's going on. Starting actually tomorrow, I'm going to do, I'm doing a Google Apps for Education, that's our Hastings Apps takeover in the labs for second, third, and fourth grade, we're going to practice logging in, we're going to be creating some slides and docs, sharing it with teachers and friends, that's taking over, until spring break, I'm going to be in a lab takeover, which I'm really excited about, to get our kids doing that, but this right here, this exploded today. Read Across America is on Dr. Seuss's birthday, it's March 2nd, and we are going to be hosting an all-day celebration of literacy, and I call it Literally for Literacy, because we have remote readers from across America who are going to be remotely reading to our students, along with Hastings students and Hastings staff. Every 20 minutes, a new Dr. Seuss- Every 20 minutes, a new Dr. Seuss book, a live feed, you jump in when you can, you experience the book, and I might interject some fun activities in there too. I'll share the link with you, I promise. But it just, it really just kind of solidified today, I'm super pumped about it. Alright, coming up on the 4th, we hope, I haven't confirmed this yet, so maybe you guys can help me confirm this. The 10 elementary teachers that we took to the TIES conference this year brought back some wonderful information and now that we're back from break and we've settled and conferences are complete, we're ready to present. And the group decided that Seesaw, Padlet, Instagram, and Twitter, the flexible learning spaces are what they want to make available to talk and discuss and explore with their colleagues. Again, this is a teacher-driven thing, I'm kind of guiding it, but it's, it's them and I like that. And I think, Mr. Collins, I mentioned this to you, you know, part of how I look at my job is, is kind of work myself out of this job, so I'm enabling other folks that doesn't always have to be me. And this is one way that we're doing that.
We don't want him to.
Yeah, he shared that with me.
No, yeah, I don't, I don't want to go anywhere, but I also want to make sure it's not just me because if it's just me, it's going to get old. So we are very much starting to be recognized locally and around, around our country. So anything that I do, I always of course brand with our logo and I make sure I hashtag with ISD200. Anytime we're working with an app, I mention that company in a tweet. And more often than not, within the hour, they tweet back and they can't wait to see what we're doing. And then they retweet it to their thousands of fans, so we're continuing to grow this digital presence. Like, hey, check out what Hastings is doing, this is pretty incredible, all positive stuff. My goal is hopefully in the near future to host some sort of regional ed tech something. I don't know what it is, this is just this feeling I have, I want to do this. I want folks coming to us instead of us going out. And we definitely have the ability to do it. So while this plays, really, I know I'm going over, I'm glad that you're patient. While this plays, what I want you to see here, this is the live Twitter feed for the hashtag ISD200. Okay, this is stuff that we have contributed to the universe, basically. We have art projects from JFK, we're featured on CARE 11, this was Digital Learning Day where we did a live event and we had teachers tweeting out a nice thank you note coming from a teacher with what we did for Valentine's Day. But this is going to change because we're going kind of back in time, we're at February 16th, and you're going to see articles that we wanted to share with one another. This is going to morph because about a month ago, we had a training and before that training, I sent out, I said, hey, if you're just going to take notes on paper, great, go for it, take notes on Twitter. Use this hashtag, hashtag #200cares and we can all see everyone's notes, we can all see everyone's photos and video evidence. Was it the Tooth Fairy that came by? Anyway, and about 13, 14 teachers took me up on that offer and, oh, vocabulary retweeted some of the stuff that we had done. But here it is, this is where it begins and I'm going to, I'm going to change this. The awesome thing was, the notes that we were going to take anyway, we still took, but we took them in a very collaborative, communal way with this hashtag. So I'm going to go up here, you'll see it any second now. I'll go up there and I'll, I'll change the hashtag. Here, here it comes. And it was so cool because I was at JFK, but I was seeing what was happening at McCullough and I was seeing what was happening at Pinecrest in all of these different, similar but unique experiences. So let's see, here we have Sandy Mysak, Michelle Johnson, Molly Cirillo, Melissa Black, Sarah Cano, Angie Jorgensen documenting what's going on. And we can go back to this anytime when we need inspiration. How can we take misbehavior and turn it into teachable moments? These ideas, these snapshots, these moments, with that single hashtag, it was such a cool, powerful experience. So anyway, that's just another one of those behold the power moments. And I, I love to give credit where credit's due, always. So I'm going to give some shout-outs really, really fast, but I'm going to leave with this. This has sort of been my mantra and I mention it appropriately when I can. If you find it important, you're going to make time. If not, you're going to find an excuse. And when you think about it, isn't that true? Everybody's busy, there's never going to be enough time, there's always one more thing. But if you, if you see it as important, you're going to find a way. If not, you're going to find that excuse. These folks right here, they find a way, every single time. If it's an idea, hey, would you try this out? Yes, absolutely. Sometimes we fall on our face, sometimes we find a seesaw. But these folks in particular, and there are more than this, but these were my frontrunners who, if I said, would you please, they would say, absolutely. And I'm so, so very proud to work with them every single day. So a little shout-out to those, anytime I need someone to jump in and give it a go, I know I can count on them. And that list grows every day. So my invitation to you, check that out. This is, this is our growing digital footprint, this is just a fraction of what we have done both as students and as teachers, establishing relationships with the International Rhino Foundation, even got featured in the Hastings Press Gazette. And it's just, I couldn't be happier with what's going on and I know that we've got so much more to uncover. So I appreciate you giving me more than 10 minutes to showcase what's going on. And I'll, I'll get you guys invitations to the Read Across America event. Just chime in whenever. It's live, but that same link, you can watch on demand anytime. Every 20 minutes, a new book from around the world, actually around the US, so. If you have questions, I'll take a few now, if you have them, otherwise you know how to get ahold of me. And yeah, I'm pumped. We've got, we've grown a lot, we've got some more growing to do, but I'm excited.
That's made me to tweet you out about the great presentation. So I just retweeted it and.
Alright, love it.
I don't have a question, I just, in all appreciation, you are making a difference. And I agree with what you say, one person can't keep up that momentum and you need others, and the others are coming.
Yeah.
And it's steamrolling in a very good way, so thank you for your energy.
Hey, I just feel fortunate to be here, this is very serendipitous how it all came to be and that's where the best stuff happens, so.
Huge impact.
Yeah.
Cool.
So thank you very much.
Thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
I had a bad camera angle, so you got better picture.
Well, it does sound pretty.
Okay.
I just.
Yeah, I'll give you a slide.
Something tells me the rest of the report won't be quite.
Yeah, it won't be that. It won't be that energizing. Just update on TIES, I just want to let board members know that I've been in several discussions with TIES, with other school districts and other superintendents as well. Now TIES is, you know, they changed their student information system, now they're going to change their HR payroll system. And there's been quite, at 917, there was probably 40% of the districts that aren't going to go with TIES, they're already moving to whether it be Skyward, whether it be Smart Finance, or wherever that might be.
Infinite Campus.
Infinite Campus, yeah. And so anyway, I just want to let board members know that, you know, we're one of 44 school districts that are a part of TIES. We help pay for the building, we get our internet from there, we get training, we used to get student information systems. So I am analyzing right now, where is our future with TIES down the road? And I've asked Melanie to pull our costs, pull what we do, do with them, et cetera, and so we're going to, I'll be bringing that, that back to the board. And I'm not saying that we're leaving TIES, but I do think at this point we need to analyze it because there are so many other competitors out there right now and so many other vendors that it's tough for TIES to find the right product that matches up with all of its members. Because what Randolph needs for their size of district isn't what Anoka or Bloomington or Diney needs, same with Hastings. So I just wanted to share that with board members. I did ask Dan on the side, a little bit with fiber optics, for him to find out some information for me, so he's investigating that as well. So just want to let board members know that we're analyzing that. Next steps in the budget cutting process, I just was going to share with the community what the next steps are, but I don't know really what they are yet. And as board members, following this board meeting, we're going to pull together in the work session and talk about what those next steps. So I put it on here as a placeholder just in case we knew for sure what those next steps are. Really, the next steps are, for the community who's watching this, is for board members and myself to continue to meet with administrators and get our questions answered and get information and, and then for us to decide what our next steps are. I shared with, on the facilities review, I shared with you as board members just a little video crash course of what the facilities committee has been looking at. I believe that either at our next board meeting or next work session, might take a little bit more time for board members who sit on the facility committee with me to share some of the things we're thinking because it's almost at a point now where, what should our next steps be? What do we think as a board what some of our next steps should be? And that's why I gave you that little crash course video on what we've been discussing. And then I just wanted to mention that the long-term facility maintenance revenue, I think that because we have to have a 10-year plan that we need to submit and that we need to annually update that and review it, it's been a ton of work for Kim, but I'm really happy of where it's going to end up over the next year. Kim's been meeting with myself, she'd been meeting with Jim Huberity, she's been meeting with Paul from Seesaw. And to have a document that eventually Kim and I can show the school board of, we think we'll do this parking lot in this year and it'll all be there and there'll eventually be pictures that you can upload and, and costs, it's really going to be a good product for the, the school board to have. And when we got into the software, we thought it was a really great software. Kim would probably tell you that it's been a lot of work. We're a little bit of the guinea pig on the software. They've been adjusting it with us, so it's been a ton of work for Kim, but I'm, I'm really happy that, that not only is the long-term facility maintenance revenue a good thing because we as a school board can do more, but it's really forced us to have a very good 10-year plan and I'm really happy with where that's going to be and what we're eventually going to be able to show our, our community who's ever on a community facility committee and what I'm going to be able to show board members. So thank you and kudos to Kim on that.
That's huge. And boy, did that grow because I remember when it was first developed, it was almost a placeholder to make sure we were going to be able to get it, to take advantage of the process. And now, it sounds like the tool itself is becoming pretty informative.
Well, the tool, very, very, yeah, just to give you an example, and we've never really had this before, maybe we should have, but it's forced us to have it. So when Kim and I were meeting with Jim Huberity and with Paul, I can't remember Paul's last name.
It's hard to say.
Yeah, so Skolste or something. We were able to, so we were saying, okay, we're going to do seal coating on some parking lots. Well, when you think about the Pinecrest, is it north, south, west, east? Well, Kim was able to pull up the pictures and we were able to have the discussion with photos, with what the projected cost would be. It was just very much more informative this time around, it's going to be a good thing for our school district and eventually our community because we can have that discussion live on video with our community as well.
Thank you. And now the 2015-16 and 1617 transportation contract.
And we haven't had a lot of time to talk with board members about this, we've been discussing this, I've been discussing it with our representative who negotiates the contract on our behalf because they know more about transportation, what's going around in the metro area. But for the, the people listening, we do get great service from Hastings Bus Company, there's, there's no doubt about it. I'm in my 14th year now and the service is outstanding, what we get from them. And I've been able to review some very competitive cost comparisons to surrounding school districts and what we put together for the two-year contract, which is this year and next year. Hastings has given us a very competitive projections of what their costs would be and that we're going to enter into an agreement with. And that's with a 3% increase for this year, a 2% increase for next year. There's also a mileage clause in there which we've never had before, which as the fuel goes up or down, if it goes down, then they owe us some money, if it goes up above a certain point, we owe them some money, and then some routing that they've been doing as well. So it's, it's a, it's a good, solid quote bid contract and I'm recommending it. And I'm also thanking Hastings Bus Company for giving us some very competitive bids compared to surrounding school districts as well. I shouldn't say bid, we're seeing what other people are getting and they're saying, we'll be below that in our contract. So we didn't take it out to bid, we didn't RFP it, but they're saying, you know, we're going to do this for the Hastings School District and I'm very happy with what's been proposed. So I'm asking for your approval.
Anybody want to make the motion?
Yeah, I'll make the motion to approve the contract.
I'll second.
Any discussion? I have a question, I was just looking at it, it talks about having five cameras on each bus. And I'd hate to ask a dumb question, but have we had those for a long time?
We've had, probably about two or three years, we haven't had five, we've had cameras within the bus company.
Oh.
That we pay for. What's it say there?
It says, a minimum of five cameras, cameras will be available for you. Oh, on, on, so that's five cameras.
Yes, I was like, whoa.
So that's if, so it's if a problem gets reported.
Yep.
Then a camera might be used.
Yes.
Okay.
And we did talk about, yeah, so we've got, exactly right, we've got five cameras which we, if there's parents or students saying, hey, we have some concerns, we can put that camera on the bus. We're probably going to look to add cameras. Not that we want to catch students doing anything bad, but it's just another level of safety and a lot of school districts are doing that.
Cool.
At least we can put the fake cameras.
Shit. Quiet!
Any other discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Next up, seniority list.
We put on our seniority list to our staff, we asked them to look at it, we asked them to review it to make sure that if we do get into a budget reduction and somebody has to bump into somebody else, that they're in agreement that that's where their seniority is. And so we've gone through that process, again, staff have looked at it, so we're bringing it forward to you as the board then to approve.
I'll motion. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And the calendar for the 1718 school year.
Yes, we've gone to, going to a two-year, this isn't even for next year, of course, it's for the following year. And I think in our discussion with the chair of the calendar committee, it was mentioned about, you know, early outs can be, early outs can be a concern specifically for parents of younger children trying to find a daycare for them at times, et cetera. And then also whether it's a good use of a school day as because of, you might only be in class for 24 minutes and then 24 minutes, whatever that might be. And that was noted in our discussion. And so we've tried to limit and have as few as early outs as possible. We've, we've gone back and forth on the number of early outs as a district, so. Anyways, the board, you've had a chance to review it, you've had a chance to ask the chair some questions about it and I'm recommending approval for 2017, 2018.
Anybody want to make the motion?
I'll make the motion. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And the 1617 non-contract rates of pay.
Part of this is continued to improve our documentation of an individual or a position that's not in a bargaining contract, what are, what are our rates for, of pay for them? And Kim has gone through this and I've reviewed it with her and we're bringing it forward for approval.
Anybody want to make the motion on it?
I'll motion. I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And two changes in assignment.
And not necessarily new positions, Kathy's replacing a PSA who, or excuse me, an individual, an instructional assistant who became a PSA. And then Tammy Steven right now is going to be lead cook at JFK for the remainder of this year and into the upcoming, following year.
Anybody want to make the motion?
Make that motion. I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And a motion to approve for wonderful people who are retiring.
I'm moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations to the retirees. Motion to accept a couple of resignations.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And a number of leaves.
I'll move to approve the leaves. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And two new hires.
All motion. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And a reassignment.
All motion. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And we have a designated school board representative. We have to confirm the name of a board representative.
I just need a name. I don't, it's not board action, I just need to know who you guys want to appoint.
Why is that important?
Minnesota State High School.
Okay.
Oh, so a state high school. Okay.
Yeah, I forgot, I forgot to inform board members on this one. Basically, the Minnesota State High School League has changed their policy and they're including board members now on votes, which I find is interesting and I applaud them. Because in the past, it's been their, their committee. And so we need one person to serve as that representative. In the past, we've had a Minnesota State High School League board representative, but there wasn't a lot of meat and potatoes with it. And so now there might be. Because now they're going to be able to vote on some issues.
Well, anybody volunteering?
I would volunteer.
Scott? Very noble of you. Any discussion? I don't think we need to make a motion on that. You're welcome to, to join that noble cause.
I'll sit next to you and pat you on the back.
And aside from noting the two dates listed for the work session on March 9th and the high school lunch on March 15th.
Okay. Yeah, we've had some juggling. We've been going out to sites for work sessions and there's been some trading of sites now. March 9th is going to be on Pinecrest originally, it was going to be at Tilden, but it'll be at Pinecrest Elementary.
Cool. And can we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And board members, if we could, and anybody from the public who wants to join us, just continue our work session discussion about our next process for budget reductions.
Thanks, guys.